I want to welcome everybody to the meeting of the Finance Committee. At this time, can I have a roll call, please, Mr. Clerk?
Okay, President for the Finance Committee, Marilyn Jordan, Joan Fonce, Dominic Camarano, David Hurd, Jeff Wangan, Donna Bronck, and Bonnie Jean Cottoli.
At this time, I would like to open the public hearing on Fall Town Meeting warrant, October 27, 2014. Do we have any citizens' participation on the public hearing? Come forward, sir. You want to step up to the mic and introduce yourself?
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry for the delay. My name is Adam Brodsky. I'm a lawyer, and I represent Winship LLC, which owns the property at 18 Winship Avenue in Wareham. To my right is Bill Clemmie, who's the property manager. And we're here tonight to speak with respect to Article 10, which is an article to amend the Wareham Wellin Protection Bylaw. It's my understanding that the FINCOM has already made a recommendation. My goal this evening was to encourage you not to support the article because it has several fundamental problems. First, the proponents of this article have been trying to construct what's essentially a small road through wetlands in the town to gain access to a beach. They were not permitted to do that because it violates your Wellin Protection Bylaw, which is more stringent than the State Act, and it prohibits this type of alteration. To try and circumvent that prohibition, they went to the selectmen and told the selectmen that one of the members of their family is handicapped, and that if the selectmen did not amend the bylaw to accommodate that handicapped person, that that would result in a violation of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And here's where the bylaw just goes completely off track. You very well may know that the ADA does not apply to private property, and particularly the construction of projects on private property. The ADA applies to issues of employment, public services and transportation, telecommunication services, and what's referred to as public accommodations. This article doesn't concern any of those four categories. A public accommodation has to have a connection to commerce. So, for example, if I operate a movie theater, a business that's open to the public, and for some reason, you know, I don't afford some reasonable accommodation to a handicapped person to access that business, that could technically be a violation of the ADA. But that doesn't relate whatsoever to private property, completely unrelated to commerce. I mean, things like even private clubs are exempt from the reasonable accommodation provisions under the ADA. So while this bylaw is attempting to create, I guess, an opportunity for the project proponents to come forward to propose this particular roadway, it's simply not a violation of the ADA for the town to maintain its stringent wetland standards. The notion that also that the cutting the path through the wellins somehow would be a reasonable accommodation doesn't make sense either. At the present time, no one is allowed to alter these wellins for this particular purpose. If the town actually, you know, granted this project proponent a permit, they would be getting a special privilege that no one else in the town would be entitled to. So again, if I can refer to my movie theater analogy, I mean, if there's no movie theater in town and a handicapped person wants to go to the movies, there's no obligation upon the town or anyone else to build a new movie theater. So the legal premise behind the article is entirely wrong, and again, the board has already voted to support it. But it has fundamental flaws, and that was my purpose in offering these comments to the board. And Bill, I don't know if you have anything to say?
I just have a couple of points. My name's Phil Clemmie. As Adam had said, I'm the manager of the property that supports the proponents of this. And I want, as Adam had said, I want people to know that the Board of Selectmen did not create this article. It was put on the warrant to avoid, again, the litigation possibility by the people who want the article, and they did not put it on there as a "we need to do this for the better of the town." It was because of a specific request. At the same time, the Conservation Commission was given the same offer to put it onto the town warrant, and they decided not to put it on the town warrant because they did not think that they would have enough time to review it and have public comment and get all the information that they would need to put it on themselves. So they chose not to. And finally, there's been some discussion here and there about litigation that we've proposed, and we have not discussed that at all. The only litigation that has been proposed on this is by the people who are behind the article. And then finally, as Adam said, this is not an article for the public good. It's specifically for, it would give this particular project special rights that nobody else would have. And finally, people need to understand that this is talking about putting a path through about 80 percent of wetlands on this project. And it is really for a particular project. It's not for the betterment of the entire community. If people want to go to the beach that are handicapped, they can more than, they're more than welcome to go to Onset Beach anytime they want. If they want to go on the Viking, they can go down the dock and go on the Viking. That's a public use of this type of ADA, and this is not for that. It's for a private use. Thank you very much.
If you want to make a comment on this, and if the board, a member of the Board of Selectmen would like to answer in any way, shape, or form, he's welcome to do so, or can not. It's entirely up to him. After I read this, when the explanation came across my desk, okay, I was a little disturbed. I can tell you that, all right? Because I had not seen the explanation prior to our voting and discussing this. And what I found odd was, it specifically says, with the bylaw change, it says "benefit to public and/or to the environment." It does not in any way, shape, or form state a private property, okay? So in changing the bylaw with this extra added, it still only affects public access or the environment. And yet, the explanation specifically states private property. So I do believe that there's a small conflict there. And I can tell you that the FINCOM did not take their recommendation or their opinion on any specific case. We actually pretty negated your letter as being personal. We understand that, you know, your sending it out was information to us, but we wanted to judge the bylaw on itself, not on any specific case. So our opinion wasn't based on any specific case, all right? I would ask a member of the Board of Selectmen as to what, who created this explanation, and why does it reference something private when the bylaw specifically says public?
Well, the purpose of the bylaw, as it stands now, of course, is to regulate what happens on private property, and there are six exceptions to the 30-foot no-activity zone, the so-called buffer zone that are listed in there, including access to docks, access to homes, so on and so forth. I don't have them all memorized. The explanation, if you're wondering about the drafting of it, that was done in concert with town council. As to whether this would apply to anybody other than one particular property owner, the answer is most certainly, I believe, yes, it would. It would apply to anybody in the circumstance where they're trying to get a handicapped owner or a handicapped family member to the beach and are thwarted from providing any sort of access by way of a path through which a motorized wheelchair or a golf cart or what have you could go down. It would be available to such a person in such a circumstance. Remember, the bylaw does create those exceptions for private properties. It doesn't just affect public property or public rights of access. In fact, none of those parties would have to go necessarily before CONCOM under that bylaw to do that. So there is already, in that bylaw, six exceptions relating to private access. So it's consistent with that.
Okay, so we are saying there's an extensive amount of exceptions, and...
Well, I don't know if I'd call six extensive, but there's six enumerated exceptions. I'll put it that way.
Six enumerated exceptions.
And this would, in essence, I believe, create a seventh.
Okay, I see a complication, and hang on one second.
Madam Chairman, I have a point of information that might be helpful.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. The bylaw already contains an exception for projects that will have an overall benefit to the public, and so there's no reason to change the bylaw if there's going to be a public benefit associated with a particular project in wetlands. So really, this is unnecessary. If the proposed project is going to have an overall public benefit, then the Conservation Commission can issue an order of conditions and waive that requirement under that exception. But that's not what's being proposed here. It's the justification for the bylaw is that somehow by denying access, this would violate the ADA. And as I said, the ADA is simply not applicable to this fact pattern. And so the legal rationale behind the bylaw is not solid, and it's going to create more issues for the town trying to work its way through this issue. Because then you're going to have the Conservation Commission judging whether a project is in compliance with the ADA. So that's the fundamental problem, is that it's simply not workable. And again, I mean, if the Conservation Commission saw the need for an exception to accommodate a handicapped person, I mean, I presume they would be on board and they would support this, but they don't. And so, again, I'm belaboring the point. I just wanted to point out that the public benefit exception already exists within the Wellin Bylaw.
Right. I understand that, and I appreciate your bringing it to our attention. I do feel like there seems to be something more extensive going on with this wording, and just playing devil's advocate, if I'm asking the question, so are 300 people that tell me they're going to ask the same dumb question. So I think there's going to be a lot of confusion, and I just hope we're prepared to answer the legal questions. Mr. Camarano?
Madam Chair, through you. So what you're saying is that the general public will not be able to use this also? This is just for private use for this one party? Or is it going to be accessible to the general public?
I can't answer that, sir. I don't represent the proponents.
Do you have a map or anything to show us where it is?
I can tell you...
I kind of know a little bit of the situation, and I have a little different view of it. But you're trying to tell us that the general public will not have access through this path to the beach?
I can't answer that. All I can tell you is that I know that the property is privately owned. There are no public rights over that, and that's all I can say. I don't represent the project proponents, and they're not here, and I'm certainly not in a position to answer that.
Okay, that's... That answers part of the question. But if the public can gain access to the beach, you know, through this, I feel that, you know, that's a major question, because if the public can access the beach through that area, you know?
Yes, sir. Well, I mean, we agree with you. If the town owned this property and...
Well, whether the town owned it or not, whether it's private or not, if it can be used by the general public to gain access to the beach, I believe the beach is everyone's right. Why should one person prevent, because they own land, the beach is for the whole town? Now, this path gives access to everyone in the town and not just this one handicapped person, maybe many handicapped people. I don't believe one person should block the use of a natural resource to the town.
Yes, sir. And I don't necessarily disagree with anything that you're saying. This piece of property, by the way, is 30 feet wide, 800 feet long. There's no parking. There's nowhere to accommodate any public access.
There are also many people in the area that can walk there, because there's no parking and no access. That's going to...
And again, I'm not disagreeing with anything you say, sir. The rationale for the bylaw is that somehow if the town doesn't do something, there's going to be a violation of the ADA, and that's simply not the case. The town may have other reasons to amend the bylaw, but this bylaw, as it's drafted, is wrong.
Well, I mean, you could say right or wrong.
I'm going to recognize Mr. Bowen, please.
Okay.
So thank you, Madam Chairman. Adam, it's nice to see you again. I didn't realize we'd be meeting today. Adam and I have had cases against each other and so forth over the years. He's a fine lawyer. A few points. Number one, as we look at this bylaw, even though there has been a threat or threats of litigation from a variety of parties relative to a decision which was already decided by the Superior Court, we shouldn't be constrained by all that in thinking about this particular proposal in terms of a particular project. If we adopt this as a bylaw, it's going to apply to whoever walks in the door and asks for relief under this particular bylaw. And I really think that's the best way to look at it rather than the litigation that Mr. Clemmie had had, or litigation that's been threatened against us. Now, that being said, it will be up to the town meeting to decide whether as a matter of good legislation, this is something that the town should have on the books. I don't think we should be thinking about it in terms of the effect that it would have on any particular applicant who hasn't even come in the door, because there are a lot of things that would have to happen before this bylaw would become effective and affect anyone in particular. Let me just go through those things. Number one, there'll have to be a motion offered at a town meeting. That motion will have to be seconded. It will be debated extensively, no doubt. There will have to be a majority vote by the members present. I believe I have that correct, Madam Moderator. If it achieves a majority vote, then it has to be sent off to the Attorney General under provisions of Chapter 40, Section 32. And no doubt, the Attorney General will look at it very closely to decide whether this is a prudent exercise of legislative authority or is an illegal action. And then when we think about the Attorney General's review, the Attorney General does not substitute her judgment as to whether she thinks a particular piece of legislation is wise or unwise. I can tell you, from three decades of experience, that the Attorney General has approved many unwise pieces of legislation. I certainly don't mean to suggest that this is unwise. I'm not saying that. The Attorney General will look at it and decide whether or not it conflicts with law. And if it does not conflict with law, the Attorney General will approve it. Now, having done so, and then once all the proper notices have been posted and everybody's aware of the goings-on, at that point, someone could approach the Conservation Commission with an application. Then it's up to the discretion of the Conservation Commission whether to grant the exception that is provided for in this. It's not mandatory. You know, anytime someone seeks grace or favor from the sovereign, and you're the sovereign, by the way, I don't see the crowns, but never forget that you're the sovereign. Anytime someone seeks grace or favor from the sovereign, the burden is on the applicant to prove that they are entitled to. And that would be the case in a matter like this. So I'm saying all this because I'm trying to steer it away from specific cases to the question of general legislation. You know, in terms of what people think at town meeting, it's not going to matter whether it affects Mr. Clemmie or his former adversary in litigation. It's going to come down to, is this a good idea, or is it? All right? And I hope that's...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward.
Thank you very much for hearing us this evening.
May it be your attention.
Do I have anyone else for the public hearing? Can you step forward?
Hi. My name is Judy Caprichio, and I'm the new president of the Swift Beach Improvement Association. And I have a question about the rededication of Swift Beach for open space and recreation. And the only question I would have about that property is what can be put up on that property? And I wanted to ask Peter those questions to answer.
Well, going back in history, which is something I understand we're not going to want to do at town meeting, but just historically, we know that at one point in time, a prior property owner was allowed the right through DEP after having not gained what they wanted at the Conservation Commission. They appealed the Conservation Commission's decision to DEP, and they were granted a superseding order that permitted them to put up a two-family house. This was, I believe, in around 2002 that this was granted by the DEP. I can tell you that since that time, in 2004 or 2005, the Coastal Zone Regulations, the Wetland Protection Act, the River Protection Act, all of these things have been amended to preclude, I believe, in a velocity zone, which is what this is, that sort of a structure from going up. Now, if you're asking me what sort of thing could be put there, I would suggest to you that possibly temporary structures, not permanent structures, could be put there. You might be able to have a rack, for example, to score kayaks or things of that nature. You could have a bicycle rack there. You may be able to put a hot dog stand or something like that. Again, something that can be brought onto the property and brought off of the property. You may even possibly be allowed to put up some kind of a protective shell structure to house such a thing, but you're not going to be able to put up any kind of...
Permanent?
Well, you know, the town's not going to be able to contract with Five Guys to put a restaurant there. The town wouldn't be able to put any kind of lodging there. The town wouldn't be able to put any kind of housing there. It wouldn't be able to put, allow the Boy Scouts to build dormitories there. None of those things could happen on that land under any present law.
So the original fear from years ago that started everything going at Swift Beach, that people weren't allowed to use their beach, and there was a beach club coming there, none of that could happen? That's all in the past? None of that can happen? And just what you said, that type of passive, the recreation and the beach use?
Yeah. And the other thing is, when you rededicate for specific purposes, and this would rededicate that property for beach and recreational use, anything that you would allow down there, any other uses, would have to be ancillary or related to the beach-going experience, to the recreational experience. So it would have to be something in connection with using the beach. So, you know, do people, when they go to the beach, would they like to buy a hot dog? I'd say, yeah, they probably do. So could you have a hot dog stand down there? You might be able to.
So who handles deciding who gets to do these things? Because I know the CR committee wanted to be in control of handling what happened there. So what is the body, and how does that? I meant to ask that part, too.
Under the town charter and the Massachusetts general laws, the Board of Selectmen are responsible for all properties other than the interior of buildings. Those fall under the purview of the town administrator. So for anybody who would want to do something down there, they would first need to come to the Board of Selectmen with some sort of an application for whatever purpose they were seeking to use the property for. In the case of anything being sold down there, that would have to go through the state procurement process, which would go to the town administrator after the Board of Selectmen decided, yeah, you know what, maybe a hot dog stand down there would be good. He would have to advertise and solicit hot dog vendors to make bid proposals to go sell hot dogs there. So, I mean, but ultimately, the decision to grant permits for the use of the property lie in the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have anyone else for the public hearing? Very well, at this time, I will close the public hearing on the Fall Town Meeting. And we will move on to Mock Town Meeting, as we like to call it. Now, I'm going to ask, only because I wasn't here last week and didn't get a chance to, my FINCOM people about how we want to do this at town meeting. I know that, you know, it's helped in the past to have one person read, and that's not going to be me this year. I'm going to hope, well...
We've grown accustomed to your voice.
I know, but it's not working all that well. So I'm going to ask Joan if she would like to be the person who reads the motions again, because you have a nice, clear, concise voice.
Yeah, thank you.
And do we have a backup volunteer to help Joan out?
Sure.
You want to, David? Okay, so Joan and David are going to read the motions. Now, you guys can take turns, or you can do it one night or the other. That's entirely up to you, how you want to do it.
What do you mean, more than one night?
When I did it, because I can't be in attendance on Tuesdays, and I won't be able to this year either, so there's certain things that have to change. I did them all on Monday so that Joan didn't get a sore throat, so...
And I did them on Tuesday.
Yes. So that worked really well, but you two can work on how you want to do it, okay? I'm also going to ask that the explanations, not, or the recommendations, I should say, from the FINCOM be either read by a FINCOM member or somewhat, you know, spoken from their heart, if that's what you prefer. And, you know, when the town moderator calls for it, we're going to give our vote, and then whatever our recommendation is, okay? And I think that's important. And Marilyn, you had said that not everybody understands what's 8-0-0 means. And can you do like a little blurb in the beginning of what you do? I was going to try to include that in our little thing in the back and didn't do that. A lot of people do not understand what 8-0-0 means.
Right. Generally, at town meeting, what we do is we have, our warrant articles are taken by lottery. So once we have whatever article is coming up, it will go up on the screen, and, gosh, I've forgotten how we do it, and I haven't done my notes for town meeting. And then generally, what I will do is ask the proponent to speak to the article, and then we go and ask for the Board of Selectmen vote, and then for the vote and the recommendation of the Finance Committee. And once we have that, then we open it up for debate.
All right, so the recommendations, I think I'll do them myself on Monday, okay, with the help from someone else. And Jeff, would you be willing to do that?
Yeah, if you're willing to do it, yeah.
Okay. And then Donna will be chairing on Tuesday, okay? So you'll work with Donna on the recommendations.
You're going to nudge when you want me to talk?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So why don't we just do this as a...
What I'd like to do, Bonnie, is because we have people watching this evening at home who may not have a warrant in front of them, what I'd like to do is read the warrant article, and then I'll ask the town administrator for the explanation, and then we'll go to the Finance Committee, just as if we were doing it at town meeting, if that's okay with you. So I want to welcome the viewing audience tonight for watching us, and it's very important to do a pre-town meeting, I think, because it gives you a chance to hear what the warrant articles are, and then if you have any questions, it gives you a few days to do some homework, to do some research, or to reach out to someone who might be able to answer the question that you would have. I do want to thank the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator and town council. There has been a lot of preparation going in, and I'm really pleased to see that, because I think when you're well-prepared for town meeting, it does help town meeting go a lot smoother. I'm hoping for one night. I'm going to try. If we're almost done, I would, you know, see if people might just stay an extra half hour and get it done. If not, definitely two nights, but I don't expect that we should really go any more than two nights with the articles that we have. They're pretty straightforward. They're pretty simple. I think our town administrator does a very good job of explaining them, and so hopefully he'll answer 99 percent of the questions before they need to be asked. So I think we can move pretty quickly with town meeting. We are getting a lot better than we were four years ago, and I think that has a lot to do with preparation. So I want to thank the Selectmen and town council and the town administrator, because they've put an enormous amount of work into the prep. So let's start with Article 1. Article 1 is the annual operating budget. And Article 1 reads, "To see if the town will vote to amend the annual operating budget for the town for the fiscal year 2015, as voted pursuant to Article 6 of the annual town meeting held on April 28, 2014, and April 29, 2014, or to do or act in any manner relative thereto."
This article does not change the bottom line of the budget. It is merely a formality to meet the Department of Revenue... It is merely a formality to meet the Department of Revenue preferences of recording the votes.
And the FINCOM vote and recommendation?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action, five for, zero against, and one abstained. The FINCOM recommends this action relative to the Massachusetts Department of Revenue to clarify any ambiguous language.
Is there any questions on Article One? Seeing none, we'll do Article Two. Article Two, "To approve and fund the FY15 capital plan, to see if the town will vote to approve the FY15 capital plan, and further see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer a sum of monies to fund the FY15 capital plan, or to do or act in any manner thereto."
In this explanation, you'll see a grid, so I will read off what the item is and then give the explanation. The first item, which is Item A, is police service weapons and equipment, the cost being $20,000. This line is to replace police service weapons and equipment that are ending their useful life for police service. They do have a trade-in value which reduces the purchase price. Police service weapons would be the, I guess, the simple way I suppose, their pistols and the holsters and the other such equipment. Item B, police portable radios, $45,000. This line is to replace police portable radios. The current portable radios have reached an age where they are no longer functioning properly. They are the primary form of communication for police officers when out of their vehicles, and a key component for the safety of the officers and the public. Item C, repair and upgrade of streetlights, $50,000. This line is to repair and upgrade streetlights within the town. Instead of just repairing streetlights, the town is seeking to upgrade them to LED lights. This will create operating and maintenance savings, as LED lights are more energy-efficient and have a much longer useful life. Item D, Minut Four School Chair Lift for ADA Accessibility, $65,000. This line seeks to purchase and install a new chairlift for the Minut Four School. The old one is no longer functional or repairable, and this is necessary to adhere to ADA guidelines. Thank you.
Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee voted no action on this article at this time. The only funding source for this article will be free cash, and at this time, free cash has not been certified. We may reconsider our vote prior to Town Meeting.
I'd like to ask the town administrator, maybe if you could explain, there are several articles that will be dependent on free cash, and maybe for the benefit of those at home, if you could maybe explain to them why the Finance Committee perhaps has held the reservation on this article, and what will happen at Town Meeting, whether or not we have free cash?
Yes, the Finance Committee has smartly withheld their vote on it, because if we do not have free cash certified, there's no funding for these articles. So, if they had made a recommendation, essentially, they'd be voting to spend money that isn't there, which is almost the worst thing a Finance Committee could do, I guess. The free cash, basically, at the end of a fiscal year, you'll have your balances, any surplus balances versus the expenses, and that is certified by the Director of Accounts from the Department of Revenue. The Department of Revenue will be in next week, and we hope to have free cash certified then. This is the first time we'll have free cash certified before Fall Town Meeting in quite some time. I believe last year it was done in January. So, we are pushing the envelope on time-wise, but this is one of the operations we're really trying to work on to show that we're doing a much better job of fiscal management. Now, free cash, per the Board of Selectmen policy, half of it goes to stabilization fund, and thereafter, it should be used for any items such as capital or some of the unforeseen items, even some of the collective bargaining for that year. So, that's really what we would use free cash for. We also like to try and leave, not spend all free cash in any fiscal year, so it's used to roll over. That can offset any deficits, such as snow and ice or any unforeseen circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to the next article, I just looked down at my wrist and realized I'm missing my watch. So, somewhere between my vehicle and coming in here, or from home and getting in my vehicle, I've lost my watch, so if anyone notices it, it belongs to me. Article Three, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds sums of money to fund ratified union contracts." Now, there are several contracts, and I'm going to refer to the town administrator, because at this point, there may be some that have not been ratified, or some that have been ratified, and I will leave that explanation up to the town administrator.
Thank you. An explanation of any ratified union contracts will be presented at Town Meeting. We have brought forward and ratified the Clerical Union Dispatchers, EMT Association, four persons, municipal maintenance and custodians, steelworkers, lower and upper management, and superior officers. Wastewater treatment was satisfied previously. So, for these items, when you seek to actually fund the contract, what you're looking to do is, in that fiscal year, the difference between what you budgeted and what the awards are. The reason why we don't have the funds in there is we've typically, we've gone basically in reverse. We've waited for our contracts to expire before we've actually negotiated them. So, most of these are going out through fiscal year 2016, which is the first time we'll have labor piece for most of these organizations. One of the reasons that you're allowed to go out three years, and one of the reasons that's helpful, is we can actually budget these funds and not request items such from free cash to fund contracts in retro. We're working on all the numbers for them to bring forth a full package to Town Meeting. How it will be presented would be a lump sum for the full amount for any of the monies needed for these contracts. Thank you.
Have you read it?
Hi. Go ahead.
Okay, the Finance Committee voted no action on this, eight, four, zero, zero. The Finance Committee voted no action on this article due to no union contracts being ratified at the time of our review. Should any contracts become ratified prior to Town Meeting, the Finance Committee will review and reconsider its vote.
Thank you. Article Four. Article Four is to transfer of funds to fund the parking kiosk program. To see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from receipts reserved for appropriation parking at Onset Pier to fund the parking kiosk program to be used for related expenses of running the parking kiosk program, with such funds to be distributed by approval of the town administrator, or to take any other action relative thereto.
This article seeks to fund the enforcement and operations of the parking kiosk program, which includes purchasing new kiosks, salary for staff associated with the program, such as parking enforcement officials, equipment maintenance and monitoring costs, area maintenance such as parking lots, sidewalks, crosswalks, and tourism, and signage. There's $124,232.25 in the, currently within that, the parking kiosk fund. Altogether, the items we're seeking to take out are $80,000, which would leave $44,232.25. Thank you.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance. Finance Committee voted favorable action, eight, positive, eight, zero, nothing, and zero abstained. Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article to ensure that the parking kiosk program maintains itself as a stable business endeavor for the town.
Just so everybody's clear, these are the kiosks at the Onset Pier, the Temple Street Lot, which is also called the CW Bishop Lot, Onset Ave, and Union Ave locations, and Shell Point. Thank you.
Article Five, unpaid bills. Article Five, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, or by any combination of the foregoing, a sum of money to pay unpaid bills of prior fiscal years, or to take any other action relative thereto." The one unpaid bill that will appear in the warrant is one to WB Mason for $252.51.
Yes, that was from the Disability Commission, and again, simply, this article seeks to pay unpaid bills from the previous fiscal year. If you do not pay the bill within that fiscal year, and I believe you have roughly 15 days thereafter, it actually needs to be brought to Town Meeting, and it's a nine-tenths vote.
So, we will be trying for unanimous. The recommendation of the FINCOM?
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action. Yeah, we need to pay our bills.
Thank you. Article Six, free cash to stabilization. "To see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from certified free cash to the stabilization fund, in accordance with the Selectmen policy, or to do or act in any manner relative thereto."
Per the Board of Selectmen policy, this article seeks to transfer half of the certified free cash to the stabilization fund. The current balance in the stabilization fund is $851,658. Having a healthy stabilization fund is a strong indicator of a financially stable community, and can increase the town's bond rating, which in turn helps decrease borrowing costs. And again, this is one of the articles that is contingent upon having certified free cash.
The Finance Committee did vote favorable action on this article, six, zero, zero, and the reason for that is, it is a mandated policy and must be followed through on, regardless of what the actual monies may or may not be at this point.
And this article will require a two-thirds vote. Are there any questions on this article? Article Seven, the sewer system at Swift Beach. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer, or borrow a sum of money to rehabilitate the sewer system in the Swift Beach area, or to take any other action relative thereto."
A yes vote on this article would authorize the town to, for the funding for this, we'd be seeking to transfer from certified retained earnings, which is essentially the water pollution control facilities version of free cash. The amount that we'd seek is $750,000, which is roughly, if you're looking at it, 3.75% of the estimated project cost. This is to rehabilitate the area, and is simply the engineering of it. So, in some, the sum of money would be to rehabilitate, or will do the engineering to rehabilitate the sewer system in the Swift Beach area. Thank you.
The Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article. The current system is 15 feet down, and groundwater level is at six foot. Therefore, groundwater is infiltrating into the system. The pipes are cracked and breaking. The new system would be located four feet down in the ground, and would therefore eliminate the problem of groundwater. This project needs to be engineered before the system can be replaced. The anticipated cost for the engineering is in the range of $750,000. All funding for this project would be through the Water Pollution Control Facility Enterprise Fund only.
Any questions on Article Seven? Article Eight. Article Eight is to rescind Article Five of the April 23, 2007 Special Town Meeting. Article Eight, "To see if the town will vote to amend the action taken under Article Five of the April 23, 2007 Special Town Meeting, by rescinding the authority to borrow funds for so much of the sewer expansion project described in such article as has not yet been constructed, or to take any other action relative thereto."
Article Five of the April 23, 2007 Special Town Meeting has approved authorized funding for the construction of a new sanitary sewer systems in certain areas of the town. Some of the areas were subsequently sewed pursuant to that authorization. However, the sewer-ing of other listed areas was not performed. The Sewer Commissioners and the Water Pollution Control Facility Director have been involved in discussions with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection to modify the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan to include other areas deemed more appropriate than those currently listed. Accordingly, this article seeks to end the funding authority to sewer the remaining areas approved by the April 23, 2007 Special Town Meeting. So, that future sewer-ing funding is aligned with a revised comprehensive wastewater management plan. A yes vote on this article would rescind the authority to borrow funds to complete the portion of the sewer expansion project known as Contract Three, so-called.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action. The vote was seven, four, one against, and zero abstaining. Until such time that the sewer project may or may not go forward, the town is encumbered in its ability to borrow while Article Five of April 23, 2007 Special Town Meeting is carried on its books.
Is there any questions on Article Eight? As a Sewer Commissioner, is there anything you would like to add?
No, just to reiterate that members of the Board of Selectmen and the Water Pollution Control Facility Director have been engaged in discussions with DEP going back almost a year to determine what the priority areas in town should be for future sewer-ing, and what you see here is a consequence of those discussions, there will be a plan in place to amend the comprehensive wastewater management plan that currently specifies what areas must be sewed in sequence. Eventually, there will be new Sewer Commissioners who decide the future course of what's going on here, in terms of any future sewer expansion. In the meantime, however, as the FINCOM has noted in its report, it does limit our ability to borrow funds, because we're, it shows up as commitment to borrow the remaining, I want to say, five or six million dollars anyway, that would have gone towards Contract Three. So, in that light, we felt that it was necessary to tear this up, give the new Sewer Commissioners a fresh start completely, in terms of what areas of town they want to sewer, in conjunction with the new Sewer Superintendent and the Wastewater Facility Director.
Thank you. Any further questions on Article Eight? Article Nine. Article Nine is the Swift Beach rededication for open space and recreation. Article Nine, "To see if the town will vote to rededicate for beach and recreational use in perpetuity, the real property located off Swift Beach Road in Monquico Avenue in Wareham, Massachusetts, shown as lots B1, B2, B3, as shown on the town of Wareham Assesses Flat 50B, and is on file in the Assesses Office, or to take any other action thereto."
The town originally acquired the property by eminent domain for beach purposes. However, the original deed of taking states that the land was taken for general municipal purposes. The article seeks to rededicate the land for beach and recreational use in perpetuity so as to meet the intent of the original acquisition.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article. Since the Board of Selectmen have been unable to acquire a deed restriction with the state-approved agency for this property paid through community preservation funds, this action would ensure that the land be used for the purpose in which it was taken for.
Is there any questions? Article Ten. Article Ten is to amend the Wareham Wetland Protective Bylaw, Section 17. "To see if the town will vote to amend the Wareham Wetland Protective Bylaw, Section 17, exception three as follows. The Conservation Commission may waive or reduce the no-activity-zone requirements listed above if in its judgment such a reduction is necessary to accommodate a project that will have an overall benefit to the public and/or to the environment, such as a sewer expansion project or a wildlife enhancement project, and shall waive or reduce the no-activity-zone requirements to the extent necessary to provide any reasonable accommodation as required by the Americans with Disabilities Act."
Adoption of this amendment to the Wareham Wetland Protective Bylaw provides the opportunity for handicapped property owners and their immediate family members, as defined by the state law, spouses, parents, children, brothers and sisters, to obtain waivers to the no-activity-zone requirement so as to be able to access the shoreline. A yes vote on this article will amend the Wareham Wetland Protective Bylaw so that it conforms with the Americans with Disabilities Act.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article, where it seeks only to conform with the Americans with Disabilities Act. The Finance Committee does not take any opinion with any specific accommodation or project.
Thank you. Is there any questions on Article Ten?
Yes. Could I, I think that someone should mention that, no matter what the vote is, that it has to be approved by the Attorney General?
In the explanation.
That's what I think it should be. I mean, no matter what we vote, it still has to be approved by the Attorney General. I think the public... I think the public should know that.
Okay, that's a good point. Uh, and the other thing, I just want to be very cautionary to those who will stand to speak that we need to speak to the article and not any legal matters that are out there, that this is a zoning bylaw and we need to speak to whether this zoning bylaw is something that's, uh, a benefit to the town or not to the town. And, and it doesn't, we, we don't need to get into other matters.
Right, well, I, I think earlier when Mr. Bone was speaking, he kind of enlightened me to get away from just this one project. Because I have my own opinions of it, and I think a lot of other people do. But the law has to be approved by the, you know, the Attorney General, and that's just going to be about whether the law is right or wrong, not on this project. And, and that kind of woke me up a little.
Article eleven. Article eleven is to amend the Sewer Commissioner Law and Town Charter. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to request the General Court of the Commonwealth to amend Chapter one fourteen of the Acts of two thousand and fourteen, the Sewer Commission Act, so-called, a home rule petition bill and related Wareham Town Charter provisions to amend and clarify personnel and labor relation ambiguities, or to take any other action relative thereto.
Thank you. If approved by the town, by town meeting and subsequently the state legislature, this article would resolve conflicts between the existing sewer commissioner legislation and the Wareham Town Charter, including union contract negotiations and personnel matters, lawsuit management and resolution, and the budgeting process. The article would not alter the authority provided by the existing sewer commissioner legislation to develop the so, the, develop and implement sewer plans and policies to set sewer rates and to oversee the Sewer Enterprise Fund. If you'll look in, you'll see it says C, Appendix A. An Appendix A will show what sections have been added and stricken out. In, uh, Section three-seven of the Board of Sewer Commissioners, you'll see under B, the addition of, and I'll read the previous sentence. The day-to-day operation care and maintenance of the sewer department shall be under the supervision of the sewer superintendent, except as expressly provided by the Wareham Charter, the Board of Sewer Commissioners Authority, and the sewer superintendent's responsibilities are intended to pertain only to the technical operation of the sewer system and facilities. The town administrator shall continue to maintain and exercise administrative control over personnel as currently provided by the Wareham Charter. And the Board of Selectmen shall continue to be the Town of Wareham's sole collective bargaining agent as provided for by GL Chapter, that'll be Massachusetts Law Chapter one fifty-E. If you move on to Section I, you'll see that the, it strikes out the language, "The sewer superintendent shall supervise, direct, and be responsible for the efficient administration of all functions under his control as may be authorized by the Charter, by law, by other town meeting vote, or by requested majority vote of the Board of Sewer Commissioners." Inserted in its place is the language, "The sewer superintendent shall be responsible for the efficient technical administration of the sewer system and facilities and for implementing any such votes of the sewer commissioners as lie within that commission's jurisdiction. Except as expressly provided in the Wareham Charter, the sewer commissioners have no control over personnel matters." In Section Two, it strikes out, uh, the sewer superintendent and puts in, "The town administrator shall appoint and remove, subject to civil service law where applicable, all sewer departments, subordinates, and employees." Further in the same article, it strikes out the sewer superintendent and says, "The appointment shall be made by," striking out sewer superintendent, "and inserting town administrator, and shall become effective." And Section F says, "The sewer, sewer commissioners shall provide a detailed and balanced budget for the sewer system and enterprise fund to the town administrator by January fifth." That language there coincides with what the requirement is for the school committee. There currently is no language for the sewer commissioners to provide a budget. And Section G, Section seven, adds, "Section seven-nine of the Wareham Charter shall govern the removal of the sewer superintendent." Thank you.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article. The vote was actually five in favor, two against, and zero abstained. This article has no impact on the town, town tax rate or budget. It does, however, clarify that the town administrator is responsible for labor relation issues as defined in the Town Charter. This article also requires that the sewer commissioners provide a detailed and balanced budget to the town administrator by January fifth, the same day as the school department budget is issued. Um, we also included a minority opinion. Um, the minority of the Finance Committee voted in the negative on this article. It is the opinion of these members that if the amendments are passed in this article, they will drastically alter the intent and purpose of the April two thousand and thirteen town meeting, where voters passed Article thirty-one, creating a separate elected Board of Sewer Commissioners. We are also of the opinion that this article will put total control of the water, water pollution control facility back into the hands of the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen. The language in Article thirty-one is originally written, is governed by the Wareham Town Charter. Each and every amendment proposed by the Board of Selectmen is, in our opinion, an attempt to confuse the voters and wrestle control of the water pollution control facility and the monies it holds. We also felt that if this article is sent back to the Massachusetts Legislature for a third time, it will stall and die in committee or not be acted upon because the state may feel that the town does not know what it wants, which may result in not being ratified in time for the April election.
Is there any questions on Article eleven?
I think, Madam Moderator, I just asked for that last opinion, um, for Town Council to speak on the end part of there about the, uh, dying in committee and affecting the current legislation.
With your permission, Madam Chairman. I'd say that if it died in committee, uh, the minority, uh, members of the Finance Committee will have gotten what they want, which is no change. The, well, I mean, that's the simple fact of the matter. If it dies in committee, none of these changes would take effect and would have no effect whatsoever on the existing legislation. It would have no effect on the election. There would be, quite simply, no effect.
Well, that was my assumption, that if, if it doesn't pass, it, then it doesn't change. Something already exists. It's already in place. So, it's not going to alter. There's going to be an election in April regardless, one way or the other.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions on Article eleven? Article twelve. Article twelve, to reorganize town departments. To see if the town will vote pursuant to Section six-dash-three of the Charter to approve or disapprove the town administrator's reorganization plan or to take any other action relative thereto.
This article is not needed and will be passed over.
Um, the Finance Committee took no action on this article as it is not needed and will be passed over.
Okay, Article thirteen. Article thirteen is the Title V Septic Program Interest. Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to expend interest earned from loan repayments made between the Town of Wareham and Wareham residential property owners as authorized under Chapter one-eleven, Section one-twenty-seven B and a half, and/or Chapter twenty-nine C of the General Laws for use for the administration of the septic loan program and for additional so, so-called vetement loan projects, or to do or act in any manner relative thereto.
This is a housekeeping article to ensure that the town conforms to the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protections Regulations under the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust, Title V, Septic Loan Program. This article authorizes that the interest earned on the loans made to individual homeowners be used for the program's administration and to make additional loans.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article. Unanimous vote of eight-zero-zero. Um, authorizing see the use of any interest earned for the administration of the loan program.
Is there any questions on Article thirteen? Seeing none, Article fourteen, Title V Septic Program. To see if the town will vote to appropriate two-hundred-thousand dollars for the purpose of financing the repair, replacement, and/or upgrade of septic systems pursuant to agreements with the Board of Health and residential property owners, including without limitation, all costs thereof as defined in Chapter twenty-nine C, Section one of the General Laws. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow two-hundred-thousand dollars and issue bonds or notes, therefore, under Chapter one-eleven, Section one-twenty-seven B and a half, and/or Chapter twenty-nine C of the General Laws. That project and financing costs shall be repaid by the property owners in accordance with those agreements, but such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town. That the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust established pursuant to Chapter twenty-nine C, and in connection therewith, to enter into a loan agreement and/or security agreement with the trust and otherwise contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan and for any federal or state aid available for the projects or for the financing abroad. And that the Board of Selectmen or Board of Health is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the projects and to take any other action necessary to carry out the projects, or to do or act in any manner relative thereto.
This article authorizes the town to apply for two-hundred-thousand in round eight funding assistance from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection through the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust Program, also known as the Title V Septic Loan Program. These funds are used to provide low-interest loans, currently at five percent interest, to qualifying homeowners to finance the repair of failed septic systems or to tie into the municipal sewer system and for administration of the program. Prior town meeting votes have authorized participation in this program through seven previous funding rounds of two-hundred-thousand dollars each. Loan repayments from homeowners are used to retire the debt from the town's borrowing from Mass DEP.
The Finance Committee voted favorable action on this, uh, eight-zero-zero. Favorable action, uh, authorizes septic system program.
Thank you. Any questions on Article fourteen? Hearing none, Article fifteen, robotic closed caption TV system for the water pollution control facility. To see if the town will vote to authorize the repurposing a sum of money from available funds in the Water Pollution Control Facility capital expense project fiscal year two thousand and fifteen previously approved at the Springtown Meeting for the purpose of purchase and installation of a robotic closed caption TV system for the water pollution control facility.
Thank you. Uh, before we get into the explanation, I just want to clarify that these are funds that are already budgeted in the FY fifteen Water Pollution Control Budget. What we're seeking here is the authorization to purchase a capital item. We need to, we go through that with the, um, it's in the charter for the, uh, for, for that you are required to go to town meeting for a capital item. Because of the cost, this is listed as a capital item. Now, the reason they have the extra funds in there is the current capital items that they listed out for the FY fifteen budget have come in under budget, and they'd like to use those funds to be able to, to purchase this equipment. And this purchase is a vital part of the operation, maintenance, and repair of the approximately fifty-seven-plus miles of aging gravity sewer pipes for infiltration and inflow and cracks, fractures, and separation of pipes. The capture of all infiltration and inflow will thereby increase the capacity to the treatment plant and decrease the cost of treating groundwater. With the purchase of this vital equipment, it will be a cost savings to the town. This equipment is currently being rented on an as-needed basis at a rate of one-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars per hour. Our current expectation will be to use the closed caption TV at a minimum of three days per week.
The Board of Selectmen, uh, excuse me, the Finance Committee voted favorable action on this, uh, six-zero-zero. Uh, the Committee felt that purchasing this equipment was really a good investment over time. Uh, we had a problem when we rented this equipment, and now that we're fifty-four percent sewed and some of the sewers are, uh, been around since the seventies, uh, there's regular need to inspect the, uh, this infrastructure, so this was a good investment.
Any questions on Article fifteen? Seeing none, Article sixteen, Water Pollution Control Facility Enterprise Fund. To see if the town will vote to amend its vote pursuant to Article nine of the annual town meeting held on April twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen, and April twenty-ninth, two thousand and fourteen, to appropriate a sum of money from the Water Pollution Control Enterprise Fund, salary and wages, expenditures, which includes debt, in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three, F and a half of the Massachusetts General Laws, to defray the operating and capital expenses of the Water Pollution Control Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and fourteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen.
This article does not change the bottom line of the budget. It's merely formality to meet the Department of Revenue preferences of recording the votes. If you remember, this is what we did also with the general fund in Article one. Thank you.
Finance Committee voted, uh, favorable action on this, six-zero-zero. And the request was made in line with, uh, Massachusetts Department of Revenue to clarify some ambiguous language in the original article, and we felt that it was, uh, the right thing to do.
Are there any questions on Article sixteen? Article seventeen, the repair of municipal streetlights and period lights. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds or borrow a sum of money to repair the municipal streetlights and period lights, or to take any action relative thereto.
This article is actually added to Article two, the capital plan. So, to approve and fund the twenty-five, twenty-fifteen capital plan. So, we will seek to pass over this article.
Finance Committee passed over.
Thank you. Any questions on, uh, Article seventeen? Article eighteen, harbor services permits receipts reserved for appropriations account. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of forty-four thousand, five hundred dollars from the harbor services permits receipts reserved for appropriations account to be transferred to the Harbor Master Maintenance and Improvements Account, or to take any other action relative thereto.
The first thing I'd like to explain is the harbor service permit, the receipts reserved for appropriation account. Those fees cannot be used for anything outside of what the, the Harbor Master's office would be. So you couldn't use it to, uh, hire teachers. You couldn't use it to hire police officers, or any items such as that. Currently in the account, there's two-hundred-and-forty-thousand, eight-hundred-and-nine dollars. And this article will seek to remove, uh, forty-four thousand, five hundred from that account. This request will allow the Harbor Masters Department to fund the following projects needed. Repairs and maintenance to markers, moorings, docks, pier, and public access. This covers the costs of general upkeep and maintenance to a hundred-and-twenty-five navigational aids, town-owned moorings, docks, and piers. It's for ten thousand dollars. Patrol boat dockage, equipment maintenance and repairs, safety equipment. This covers yearly dockage costs for patrol boats, upkeep, and maintenance to the Harbor Master equipment, patrol boats, vehicles, and safety equipment in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars. Budget replacement. The Wareham Police and Harbor Master Department provided law enforcement coverage for unfunded waterways events which have affected, uh, budgeted payroll. These events were part of the Cape Cod Canal Celebration, fifty-five hundred dollars. Engineering and professional services. Engineering and professional services for public access areas and mooring fields. Updates to the harbor management plan and waterways bylaws. Update to mooring management software and the mooring grid, fifteen thousand dollars. Printing, mailing, and supplies covers expenses of mailing harbor service permits, stationary and office supplies, one thousand dollars.
Finance Committee voted favorable action on this, six-zero-zero. Uh, the transfer is appropriate, uh, from harbor and waterways expenses as the funds have already been collected from those using harbor services. This article has no impact on the to, town tax rate or budget.
Are there any questions on Article eighteen? Seeing none, Article nineteen, Housing Inspection Program Revolving Fund. To see if the town will vote to increase the spending limit of the Board of Health Rental Inspection Revolving Fund from the fifty-thousand-dollar spending limit as voted in the April two thousand and fourteen town meeting to seventy-five thousand dollars, or to take any action relative thereto.
The program requires more inspectors than originally anticipated. In order to operate and expedite the program more efficiently, additional funds would be required. Now, to expl- Now, to explain this, this does not grant them additional funds. It increases the ceiling on the revolving fund. All the funds that go into here are from the fees derived from the rental inspection program. So in other words, before, once they reached fifty thousand dollars in revenue, that was all they could expend, even if they had seventy-five thousand dollars in revenue. The rest of those funds went to the general fund, which eventually went to free cash. What they're seeking is to increase the ceiling to seventy-five thousand so that they are able to cover the costs of this program through the fees that they generate, and they're simply raising the ceiling on that. Thank you.
The Finance Committee voted favorable action eight-zero-zero. This program is self-sufficient financially. However, the Board of Health instituted the program, they underestimated the number of rental units in town. This is basically a housekeeping article to transfer funds from one account to the next.
Are any questions on Article nineteen? Article twenty, State Mandated Measure. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money necessary to complete a state mandated measure and list of all real estate parcels in the town, or to take any other action relative thereto.
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts requires a full interior and exterior inspection of all parcels every nine years. This project will be active for three years in order to accommodate the inspection of roughly fourteen thousand eight hundred and twenty parcels. You'll see that in the Appendix B is actually some information on it and additional quotes. We're seeking a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. This would have to come from free, certified free cash. The total cost estimate is a little over a hundred and seventy-three thousand, and with the ten percent, a little under ten percent contingency, it brings it up to a hundred and ninety thousand. Thank you.
The Finance Committee voted no action eight-zero-zero. All articles require a funding source. Since the only funding source available for this expense would come from free cash, the Finance Committee voted no action until the amount of free cash can be certified. This article may be passed over if it is determined that there is no free cash funding available.
Thank you. Any questions on Article twenty?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Camerano.
Going back, I want to make sure that everyone is aware that if we don't do this, this is, I'm not sure if I'm right or not, this will have a, a problem with us setting our tax rate next year. Am I correct?
Yeah, this isn't, when, when you're calling it a mandate, it's, it's beyond that. It's what you need to do for your, for your taxes, which is how we garner the majority of our revenue.
So my, my opinion here is, I don't know if everyone agrees with me or not, but if we don't fund, fund this through free cash, which we are hoping to, that we are going to have to find some way to fund this to set our tax rate. This is, I think we should be more aware of that. Am I right or wrong in saying that?
It wouldn't necessarily affect this year's tax rate, but we are behind on the schedule, and it can impact the future years. So most likely, what I would suggest, if we do not have free cash certified, is that we would, I would ask that we transfer from the stabilization fund, but only under the, only with the specific clause in there that as soon as the certified, at the next town meeting, the certified free cash, that not only half of it goes to the stabilization fund, but the a hundred and ninety thousand. And this is one of the things you can use the stabilization fund, is essentially to borrow from yourself, as long as you're, you're, you know, fiscally conservative enough to put those funds back in there.
Okay, I just, people want the general public to be more aware this is a lot more important than it sounds. The way it's written, it doesn't sound as important as it might, might well be.
Can we substitute? There was another write-up for this before we decided to take no action based upon free cash. And they spelled the fact that it was mandated. In fact, you know, if you look at other towns, it's all required. You have to do it. And turns out that the amount requested is actually very good compared to what other towns are spending, so. We, it feels like we just need that. If we find there's free cash and we're able to decide to vote on it based upon the use of free cash at the six o'clock session before town meeting, we need to have a different explanation.
Oh, definitely. We, we do plan a meeting on these articles at six o'clock. Any, whatever free cash update we have, we'll have to take a revote or reconsideration on those articles, and then, you know, write something up.
Another description would be.
Yeah.
That would, then we go back to the other description.
According to that vote.
And town manager asked for it to be high priority, so we need to make that clear.
Yeah.
If we don't have a free cash, then I could for, and therefore we should have something that we can hold on to take it out of the stabilization fund.
Okay, I can have that.
That's a good idea.
As a motion.
That would be, yeah.
That would be very good.
A contingent motion.
Yeah.
I think we all agree it's important.
Yeah, yeah, we have to.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Tom.
Through you to the moderator. The articles, I know that we do them in a lottery system, but saying free cash, we know we have just so much. Is it possible to pull this article first? Out of all the ones that go to free cash because of its importance, or am I wrong in saying that?
There is a provision in the charter that allows the selectmen to ask that if there is a financial impact, that it be taken up at the beginning of the meeting. So that would be up to the selectmen to make that request.
Or perhaps all free cash articles.
Yeah, there's.
Should be combined. Yeah, there's not enough money to do them all. There's only so much to do. Take them in a more important order, or that's not up to me to say which order, but you know what I mean.
I understand.
Yeah, we had a list just for benefit of five of them. I think one of them already ended up in capital, so. It's just four now that we need to look at.
And in that, this is a good opportunity to explain to the public that sometimes preparing for town meeting is not as easy as it seems because there is always something that floats somewhere out there that has to be resolved at the last minute, and we get down to the final wire, and sometimes there are changes that have to be made, and we have to accommodate them. So it's not an easy preparation at times. Sometimes it's a last-minute thing that has to happen, and I know we sometimes get frustrated because we would like to be prepared and be ready, but these are the kinds of things that do come up, and we have to be prepared to handle them.
Madam Chairman.
Go ahead.
Can we agree on all three of us, I mean, all three boards? I know you can only speak for yourself here, but can, can we?
It says a selectman can ask, right?
Can we, can, can we agree that, of the degree of importance that this should come up before the lottery? And we should have this, this in writing before we go, whether it be stabilization or whether it should be? Can we all agree on that tonight?
Well, I would, I would suggest that first we wait and see what free cash amount is certified, if indeed it's certified before town meeting. If not, then it's almost moot as to when the article comes up because we've identified the second funding for source, which is the stabilization fund.
I think if we had come forward and we, when we were at the Capital Plan Committee, I think we'd used an estimate maybe nine hundred thousand would be, would keep us in a fair range to, to do all of the free cash articles. So we'll know that if we have above nine hundred thousand dollars, then the, the point is we'd be able to act on all of them, no matter where they fell in. If we do have less, it probably would, I would suggest that the, if one of these free cash articles contingent comes up, then maybe we can take it out of order, then with the importance and ask for it, so.
My, my point was basically, if we don't have a free cash number, can we all agree that this should, wording should come up, that it should come out of the stabilization and, and come out of order, that, based on the degree?
That would be contained in the motion, wouldn't it, Madam Moderator? I mean, at this point, we're, we're still crafting motions for town meeting. Are we allowed to identify two funding sources and say, if free cash is certified in a sufficient amount, it comes out of here, and if not, it comes from stabilization? Can we provide two separate funding sources in the same motion? Or do we have to wait and see what we have for free cash? And if we don't have it, then just make the motion for stabilization fund use?
I mean, I'm going to let counsel take that one, because I think he can give you a better explanation than I can.
With your permission, Madam Chairman. The Department of Revenue disfavors so-called contingent motions. In fact, virtually the only contingent motions that the Department of Revenue will approve are Proposition Two and a Half-type contingent motions, and that's only because the statute specifically provides for it.
Yeah, but they've done that.
Yeah, well, yeah, and I realize that's a very different path than the one we're discussing, but I think you would, when it comes to the point of making a motion, you would want to have a, a defined, ascertainable funding source that you could take to the accountant the very next day, and she could write the check.
So, Madam Chairman, I guess then what we should have prepared for town meeting would be two separate motions, depending on what the circumstance is. One, either one will be presented, or the other will be presented.
Would it be that, or would it be an amended motion on town meeting floor?
No, it would be amended.
No, because the motions are made initially at town meeting. In fact, we're going to be probably writing some of them right up until town meeting. So remember, the amendment is not the article, or rather, the motion is not the article. The article is simply notice to the voters that something in this area is going to happen, and that's, the motion is what is voted at town meeting, so.
You can make it the way you want it.
Yeah.
And this has happened in the past, that we've actually had changes to the motions right at six-thirty, when either the Finance Committee has been meeting, and they've been given a new motion because of something that has come up. I know it's sometimes frustrating and difficult, because you sit there and say, well, this is what I have, but these things happen, and you have to be prepared that, that this might, and this would be a good example of one that, that might, you may get a different motion at the last minute.
Those are Madam Chair's favorites.
Yeah. As long as they're clearly defined, and, you know, we, we vote our recommendation, you know, prior to that, prior to that meeting, so we, we know that, you know, which motion we're going to go for, I, I think we'll be perfectly fine.
Four years ago, there were a lot of those, but we're getting much, much better. Much, much better.
Yeah, I tried to not incur the wrath of either you or the chairman of the FinCon by getting the, the selectmen-sponsored articles. I wanted to get the motions out too sweet.
Yeah, we are doing a much better job from four years ago because I think my first meeting, I never even saw the motions till six o'clock that night, and it was a little difficult to look at them and try to go through sixty-some-odd motions, and then sit there and try to get them to Matt and get them up on the screen because he didn't have them either. So it does get a little touchy when you get into those circumstances, so I really appreciate all the hard work that has been going on in the last four years to make this process so much smoother. Article twenty-one, Community Events Fund. To see if the town will vote to petition the legislature for special legislation amending Section two of Chapter eighty-two of the Acts of two thousand eight to allow for the annual deposit of twenty-five percent of the proceeds of the Wareham Parking Meter Fund into the Community Events Fund, and twenty percent of the excise collected under Section three A of the General Laws, Chapter sixty-four G, also known as the hotel and motel tax, as the effective date of this act and for the subsequent fiscal years, but in no event earlier than, and this is a scrivnis error that is going to be changed in the motion to June first, two thousand fifteen, July first, I'm sorry, two thousand fifteen, and further, in no event shall the amount in the aggregate in the Community Events Fund for any fiscal year exceed sixty thousand dollars, or to take any other action relative thereto.
The Community Events Committee, established through the state legislature in two thousand seven, is a small group of volunteers that serve as the conduit for distributing the earmarked funds to the town's nonprofit organizations and for ensuring that they follow the regulations and guidelines set forth in conducting their advertising and promotional venues. In its simplest form, the state regulations require that the monies be spent for advertising and promoting events to attract tourism or for enhancements that would attract more out-of-area visitors. The benefits are that the tourists would visit the town of Wareham, generate more revenue for local businesses, which in turn would enhance tax revenues for supporting town services and expenses. The original two thousand seven town meeting warned article and subsequent state legislation provided community events funding from the Parking Meter Fund and the Hotel Motel Tax Receipts for only one fiscal year. This article, if passed by town meeting and enacted into law by the state legislature, would provide the Community Events Fund with annual funding from these sources.
Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action seven, for, one against, zero abstaining. The percentages from the revenue collected, as well as the annual aggregate maximum cap, are financially reasonable.
Are there any questions on Article twenty-one? Article twenty-two, Community Preservation Committee, F Y fourteen reserve increase. To see if the town will vote to increase the F Y fourteen reserves to reflect the additional community preservation funds received from the state match as follows. One, historic preservation, twenty-six thousand dollars. Two, open space, twenty-six thousand dollars. Three, affordable housing, twenty-six thousand dollars. For a total of seventy-eight thousand dollars from the unallocated fund balance, and further to reserve one million five hundred ninety-eight, seventy-nine from the unallocated fund balance, and to do or act in any manner relative thereto.
The F Y twenty-fourteen estimated community preservation account revenue at the spring two thousand fourteen town meeting was seven hundred and fifty-four thousand. The actual fiscal twenty-fourteen community preservation account revenue is one million fourteen thousand four hundred twelve dollars. Chapter one thirty-nine, Section sixty-nine dash eighty-three of the Acts of two thousand twelve enact to sustain community preservation add an additional twenty-five million dollars to the statewide CPA trust fund in fiscal year two thousand thirteen. Expanded flexibility for recreational projects, added an optional one hundred thousand dollar exemption for commercial and industrial property, and made numerous other technical and clarifying amendments.
The Finance Committee voted favorable action on this eight-zero-zero. The Committee felt that consideration of the state's increased revenue to the community preservation funds allocating to these specific fund balances is feasible.
Any questions on Article twenty-two? Seeing none. Article twenty-three, Community Preservation Reserve Increase. To see if the town will vote to increase the F Y fifteen reserve to reflect the additional community preservation funds expected to be received from the state match for the following categories. One, historic preservation, seventeen thousand four hundred dollars. Open space, seventeen thousand four hundred dollars. Affordable housing, seventeen thousand four hundred dollars. Administration, eight thousand seven hundred dollars. For a total of sixty thousand nine hundred from F Y fifteen estimated revenue, or to do or act in any manner relative thereto.
With the state approving an additional twenty-five million in funding for community preservation funds, it is expected that Wareham's share will be seventy percent of the town CPA contribution. This request is to increase the ten percent reserve and five percent administrative fund, reflecting the additional one hundred and seventy-four thousand expected this year, as required by law. The total ten percent reserve for each category will be ninety-eight thousand six hundred dollars, and administrative will be forty-nine thousand three hundred dollars.
Finance Committee voted favorable action on this eight-zero-zero. The Committee recommends favorable action in consideration of the state's increased revenue to the committee, community preservation funds allocating to these specific fund balances is feasible.
Any questions on Article twenty-three? Article twenty-four, CPC, Old Methodist Meeting House Restoration. To see if the town will vote to transfer from Community Preservation Historic Preservation Reserve Fund, or any other monies available in the Community Preservation Fund up to the sum of ninety-eight thousand dollars to award a grant to the Wareham Historical Society to restore the Old Methodist Meeting House located at four ninety-five Main Street, Wareham, Mass, and to receive a preservation restriction, or to do or act in any manner relative thereto.
The architectural and structural survey done in two thousand thirteen by Derland von Voorhees Architects was used as the basis for this grant request. The Old Methodist Meeting House in part of Wareham's, is part of Wareham's history. The Methodist Episcopal Society erected this building in eighteen thirty-one to eighteen thirty-two on Tyhonet Road. It was moved to the current site in eighteen thirty-five and enlarged. It was used as a general store and a laundromat before being donated in nineteen seventy-four to the Wareham Historical Society by Joseph and Georgia Chamberlain. It is currently a meeting house used by the community for various events and programs.
The Finance Committee voted favorable action eight-zero-zero. Through our review, we noted that the building is owned by the Wareham Historical Society and is used for various town functions, as well as being available for rent by town residents for their own private functions. It is within the town's historical zone. Expenditures such as these meet the criteria as acceptable by the Massachusetts Community Preservation Statute. Preservation Statute for the use of funds collected by towns electing to participate in community preservation.
Is there any questions on Article 24? No, I don't remember it being used as a store, but I do remember it being used as a laundromat. So, Donna, you've been around that long, too. So, our parents used to go there.
Not as a store.
Not as a store, that was before our time. Article 25, CPC, Agewon Village Rehabilitation of Unit 51, Building 5, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the Community Preservation Affordable Housing Reserve, or any other available monies in the Community Preservation Fund, under Affordable Housing, the sum of $70,000, for a grant to the Wareham Housing Authority to create one additional housing unit, Unit 51, Building 5, at Agewon Village, located at 57 Sandwich Road, Wareham, Mass., to accommodate an eligible Wareham resident for affordable public housing, or to do or act in any manner relative thereto.
The Wareham Housing Authority has a significant waitlist of residents in need of housing. Each new unit contributes to reducing that need. By rehabilitating Unit 51, this would also bring in additional revenue. The office which currently occupies Unit 51 will move to the community building at no additional expense. It is hoped that construction can be completed in the spring of 2015.
The Finance Committee voted favorable action, eight zero zero. The reestablishing another much-needed rental unit at this location for a resident in need of immediate housing is the right thing to do, and an acceptable use of CPA funding under the criteria for affordable housing.
Is there any questions on Article 25?
I may have been on painkillers when I voted that one. I just the right thing to do, I must have been in a good mood.
Article 26, CPC, American Legion Hall Restoration, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the Community Preservation Historical Preservation Reserve, or any other available monies in the Community Preservation Fund, up to the sum of $114,543, for a grant to the American Legion Post, Angela?
Yes, they don't want Hall.
They don't want Hall, and they are so in the motion, we'll make sure we take that out.
They want the exterior to be cleared as they found the building.
To the American Legion Post 220 for the restoration of the American Legion Post 220 located at 777 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., or to do or act in any manner relative thereto.
The American Legion Hall was built in 1912, and was once used as a two-room schoolhouse. If possible, other sources of funding will be sought from various state and federal grants. There are eighty members who deserve a safe, clean environment to meet.
The Finance Committee voted favorable action, five for, three against, and zero abstain. Through our review, we noted that the building is a historical building that was once a town's schoolhouse. The town transferred the building to the American Legion for use as its post-meeting hall, with the stipulation that it be returned to the town, rather than sold to a private party. While the American Legion is a private organization that is not open to the general public, the organization is made of individuals who have served their country, and who continue to contribute to the town through the Legion's many civic activities. Any similar organization that used the historical site as its headquarters would be just as eligible to apply for a CPA grant.
Is there any questions on Article 26? And no, I did not go to school where I heard you go.
I should do the minority opinion. I should read the minority opinion as well, as that they had a roof done with community preservation funds a few years ago. The Legion has not done anything else to prevent the property on its own. This is a small, private group with private membership. We also felt using more community preservation money for this group would not benefit the general public, and feel that the money could be better spent.
Thank you. Any questions on Article 26? Article 27, Community Preservation Committee, Parker Mills Dam Restoration, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money for dam repairs at Parker Mills Pond, and all other costs incidental or related thereto, to determine whether this appropriation shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise, or to take any other action relative thereto.
The Parker Mills Dam is classified as a high hazard potential, or Class 1 dam, by the Office of Dam Safety at the Department of Conservation and Recreation. This classification means that failure will likely impact one or more of the following: loss of life, serious damage to homes, industrial or commercial facilities, important public utilities, main highways, or railroads. The state has awarded $165,000 for this project.
The Finance Committee voted favorable action, six for, one against, and no abstains. During our review, we received reports from five financial community members who made an onsite visit to the Elm Street closure. The Parker Mills Dam underlies the road that is failing, bridge culverts, and other weakening issues. The bridge is not safe, and the town must repair the bridge, road, and the dam. The vote was taken after extensive discussion concerning a very difficult and complex situation, and represents the Finance Committee's belief that this is the best option available to the town at this moment. The $165,000 grant and the $835,000 2% interest loan from the state to the Community Preservation Committee to fund the repairs has a time limit for acceptance, and if not accepted at this fall town meeting, it will be withdrawn. The Town Stabilization Fund has not been adequately funded at this time to cover this situation. At the time the repairs were made, two other culverts that moved water into the Tremont Nail Building will be removed. The water flow, per the 2008 consultant site assessment, is a major drawback to any future use of the site for any purpose.
I just want to make a note that, as Chairman of the Finance Committee, I deleted a minority opinion on this, because one dissenting vote is does not my minority make. Thank you.
The Board of Selectmen, or anyone, has the ownership been resolved? That's, a lot of people have mentioned to me, that's a major issue.
Not at this time, that's still under review. And just to revisit, so people understand, the purpose of this article is to take advantage of state funds to the extent that they've been made available to us. And by that, I mean, in February, we received a combination grant loan opportunity, if you will, from the state Department of Conservation and Recreation, I think it was. They gave us a cash grant of $165,000. They gave us an opportunity to borrow at low interest, up to $835,000. That's where the million-dollar award comes from, but only $165,000 of it is cash. The rest is the ability to borrow up to the $835,000. The state is requiring that town meeting vote to authorize the borrowing up to that amount, so as to have town meeting having allocated that permission in order to proceed with an application, I believe in the spring, should it be necessary. We certainly should have the ownership issues resolved by then, we'll know what the amounts are, and of course, we'd only borrow up to the amounts that were needed for the town share of the dam, to the extent that that's determined. So, that's what this is. It's almost, it's more about making sure that we secure all of the funds available to us before we know how much we have to spend, and that's unfortunately the way it's set up, because again, we have to resolve this ownership issue.
Through you again, Madam Chair, but I know that this is probably just my opinion, but I think other people at town meeting are going to say the same thing. We all know that, you know, something has to be done, but to ask the public to pay for this, you know, have CPC use their money to pay for this loan, knowing that, you know, we might not own it, are there other people who are going to benefit from it, you know, personally? It just seems to me to be, you know, a wide-open funnel for a lot of problems.
Well, again, the ownership issues, to the extent that they are clarified and resolved, that will be determined the amount of cost that the town has to incur in the overall repair. And again, the purpose of this isn't to use public funds to benefit any private parties who might have an ownership interest in the dam. That will not occur. To the extent that these ownership interests can be amicably agreed to, they will be. To the extent that they are not, then probably a third party will get involved. So, I think what we're asking here is, we don't want to blow the opportunity to get available funding to deal with this in the event that we have to spend up to a million dollars to fix it. So, we're looking for that authorization, so that we're in line to borrow the money to the extent that we need it. It's certainly not intended to convey any benefit to any other owner in the dam, or to deal with their percentage interest. If that's found to be the case, then they would have to step up and deal with their percentage of the dam. Of course, that requires negotiation, that requires agreements and everything else with them, that would have to be undertaken and brought before the public subsequently. But we just don't want to lose our place in line for this money.
And that also is, you know, all good to me, as long as, you know, something is done, you know, before the thing is spent. You know, there's also other issues that people should be aware of, that, you know, there are ownership issues, but there are also a lot of water rights that benefit people that don't have ownership. You know, there's a lot of hidden issues here, and I just want everyone to be aware of that before, you know, they decide, you know, I don't want to lose this, if this is the only way we can get money, I don't want to lose it either. But there are a lot of issues here that need to be straightened out before I would get my vote, and that's just my opinion.
We're working on them.
Thank you.
We just can't, we're just not in a position to provide you with all the answers you seek before town meeting.
Thank you.
I want to recognize Mr. Bowen's speech.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd echo a lot of what Selectmen Titlebaum said, and, Don, you're absolutely right that these types of projects are very complicated because of water rights that are involved. We have a title examiner who's actively looking at this. If you talk to people who have experience in working with dam projects, D-A-M as opposed to D-A-M-N, although the latter may apply, you know, whenever one of them comes along, all your ears are grown, because every one of them is extremely complicated, you know. In fact, I spent this afternoon walking across the top of another one of our fine dams in town, taking a look at that and what we might be doing with that in the future. But with respect to this one, I think it's fair to say, although because I'm your lawyer, I don't think things I say can be held against us in court, I think it's fair to say that we will most likely have some responsibility regarding the maintenance of that. Notice I'm hedging that, because I don't want to concede anything, but I would say it would be prudent to prepare as if we did have responsibility for some of it. It's the amount of responsibility that's going to be an issue. I know who these other holders are, I know what their interests are, I certainly know what their preferred position would be, which would be to pay nothing. That's not a position that I'm in agreement with, and I don't believe it's a position that the Board of Selectmen would be in agreement with. So, truly, as Peter said, you know, the brass ring is there, and we're going around in the merry-go-round right now. We're only going to have one grab at this potential funding, and so what we're really doing is we're making sure that we, if we have an ownership interest, and I told you what I think, that we have that opportunity at hand, and then obviously it would be our desire not to spend up to any higher amount than we absolutely have to.
No witnesses.
Yeah, we're just trying to be prudent, and, you know, the simplest thing probably would be just to cut a big hole and drain all the water out. But then all those other people with the rights will be having things to say. But, you know, we are working hard on it, and this is just to make sure that we have the money lined up. I mean, heck, does a preschool downstream from us? You know, I'll say no more.
Any other questions on Article 27?
On the dam, Dan.
Yeah.
And the beat goes on.
The dam, Dan.
Article 28, Community Preservation Committee, Tweedy and Barnes Preserve, Central Corridor Addition, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve Fund, or any other available monies in the Community Preservation Fund, to grant the Wareham Land Trust the sum of $158,000, to purchase the property shown on a plan and deeds on file in the office of the town clerk. Book volume 36795, page 304, of 4.53 acres, assesses map 68 Lot 1A, and book volume 5938, page 328, of 3.16 acres, assesses map 68 Lot 1B, or to do or act in any manner relative thereto.
The owner of the property will be the Wareham Land Trust, and the holder of the conservation restriction will be the Conservation Commission. It is located at 230 Blackmore Pond Road. There are three goals for this project. One, adding important contiguous biomap and water-protective acreage to our Tweedy and Barnes Conservation property. Two, adding to our property an old railroad bed which currently divides and prevents full access to the two largest parcels of the reservation, and which will provide easy walking access to scenic views of the Sipican River. Three, provide space for parking and trailhead signage for the project. An application has been made to the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for a conservation partnership grant of $72,500. The amount is to be transferred from the Wareham Community Preservation Fund in accordance with this article, will be reduced by any successful award from this grant request. And kickoff is in 12 minutes.
Yes. We're almost there, we're almost there.
The Finance Committee voted, make it the law, eight zero zero. The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article, transfer from the Community Preservation Fund to the Wareham Land Trust is appropriate and within the Community Preservation Charter. The Wareham Land Trust Tweedy and Barnes Preserve is presently cut in half by a parcel 1B in this article. The second parcel, 1A, includes space for a parking lot off Blackmore Pond Road, so preserving these two parcels essentially completes the Tweedy and Barnes Preserve. Requested funding will purchase the two properties, and also cover the cost for consultant and filing fees, as cutting new trails and building a new parking lot, with no impact on the town budget.
I believe that there will be a map available as an overhead. They've sent me a map to be approved, so I think this will be a good visual for people to see of this article. Article 29, Community Preservation.
Hold on a minute, Selectmen.
Yeah, I have one question, I don't know if anybody can answer it or not. It says in the explanation here, the owner of the property will be the Wareham Land Trust, that's fine. It also says the holder of the conservation restriction will be the Conservation Commission. Have they actually voted to agree to hold this?
I don't know.
And so, we've got a head shake on it, so that's not a good thing.
Typically, Peter, that they do, that the Wareham Land Trust generally does cross their t's and dot their i's ahead of the game, I would suspect that, yes, they have spoken to them.
I would suggest that perhaps, it's not a really approach, it's on here at the request of the Community Preservation Committee. What I would suggest then is that perhaps the Chairman of Community Preservation could reach out to the Land Trust, just so that we have that answer for town meeting. I think it's an important thing to make sure that that's actually in place. I will also take the opportunity to generally note that I'm not really crazy about our Conservation Commission holding conservation restrictions. I think it puts them in a position of having to be a litigant to uphold the restrictions, and I'm not sure that our contract with Attorney Bowen at all covers these circumstances, so I just want to make that known as well.
Anything further on Article 28?
Very social.
Article 29, Community Preservation Playground Rehabilitation Fund, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve, or any other available monies in the Community Preservation Fund under Recreation, a grant to the Open Space Committee, the sum of, and is that going to change, Angela? The dollar amount from $75,000?
I don't believe so.
No?
It's a possibility, but I don't believe so at this time. The only information I have, Madam Moderator, is the information that you saw me hand out from Cicada indicating the nine priorities of the playground we have. from the Sisler indicating the nine priorities the playground we have studied and identified.
I did receive an email from her saying that that might be reduced, so that may change, but it now reads the sum of $75,000 to fund playground rehabilitation for existing playgrounds that have been identified as being the most critical by the Recreation Assessment Report, or to do or act in any manner. And I believe the email that came to me was it may be reduced to $50,000.
Is there any problem with the reduction?
None at all. You can always go down, you can't go up.
The deadline for submitting a CPA grant for the fall town meeting is the first Tuesday in June. The Recreation Assessment will not be completed until the end of August. The deadline for articles submitted by a town committee is August 15th. So, spring town meeting would be the first period a grant could be acted upon for any specific playground. Passing this article will allow the rehabilitation process to begin when the report is completed.
The Finance Committee voted favorable action eight, zero, zero. The Recreation Assessment Report funded by the spring town, 2013 town meeting, included a significant listing of hazards at the town's playgrounds along with recommendations for upgrades. This expenditure will serve to remedy the hazards and make the playgrounds more inviting and shorten the time required to complete any upgrades. Recommendations for upgrades funded by the Community Preservation Resources will be presented at the spring 2015 town meeting.
Are there any questions on Article 29? Article 30, Community Preservation Committee Tremont Nail Company Bryant Farm Debt Payment, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money to pay for the redemption of certain bonds of the town, to determine whether this appropriation shall be raised by transfer from unallocated CPA funds or otherwise, or to take any other action relative thereto.
The Tremont Nail Bond was authorized on April 27, 2004, Town Meeting Article Number 26, in the amount of $1,265,930. The Bryant Bond, Bryant Farm Bond was authorized on April 27, 2004, Town Meeting Article Number 27, in the amount of $95,622, essentially 93 percent of Tremont Nail, 7 percent Bryant Farm. It is to the town's financial advantage to pay down this bond debt and save in interest payments. The amount is made up from the following. Tremont Nail principal balance and interest to call is $576,463.75. Bryant Farm principal balance and interest to call is $40,811.25, as well as $10,500 for administrative costs associated with calling the 2005 CPA bond.
The Finance Committee voted favorable action eight, zero, zero. The Finance Committee felt that the Community Preservation Committee has available funds, and this is the only opportunity available from the bonding company to pay off this debt in full. Paying it off now will save about $90,000 in interest payments over the next 10 years.
Are there any other questions on Article 30? Article 31, to replace an inclined wheelchair lift at Minnetonka Forest School, to see if the town will vote to appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds an amount of money to be expended under the direction of Wareham School Committee for the installation of a new inclined wheelchair lift for Minnetonka Forest School. This project will include the removal of existing lift and installation of a new lift.
This article be passed over as this was entered into Article Number Two, the proven fund, the 2015 capital plan.
Finance Committee, you've passed as well.
Any questions on Article 31? Hearing on Article 32, Return Ethel E. Hammond School to Town Control, to see if the town will vote to transfer care, custody, and control of the Ethel E. Hammond School so-called, and as further described in a filing on file of the office of the town clerk, from the school committee held for school purposes, should be purposes, to the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes, including sale or other disposition, or take any other action relative thereto.
Following a reorganization of the schools, the Ethel E. Hammond School is no longer needed by the Wareham Public Schools for the education of students.
Finance Committee voted favorable action seven, zero, zero. Noted that the school is no longer used, and the articles of formality as a town meeting is required in order for the town to take any action relative to the building.
Any questions on 32?
Has anyone, another question was wrong before. Has anyone, excuse me, Madam Moderator, has anyone looked in to see if there's any title restrictions on that school for sale by the town? I know there was a question before whether or not it was or not.
With your permission, Madam Chairman. I went through the deeds, and with your permission, I'm going to jump ahead and bring in the West School into the discussion. Yeah, because I know there's an issue there. For the Hammond School, there were no such restrictions in place. On the West School, there was a provision that the heirs and assigns of, yeah, Tremont Nail, yeah, of the Tremont Nail Company would have the right to meet a, match a fair market value offer for the West School. So, I don't believe that that would affect this particular change of custodianship, if I can put it that way. If, however, at some point, we wanted to sell the West School, the heirs and assigns of Tremont Nail, whoever they might be, could show up and say, hey, you know, we want it for that price. And I'm guessing, and Selectmen Titlebaum can slap me down if I'm wrong, if they're listening and they want to come forward now and make an offer, you know.
But there's nothing.
54 Marion Road.
Third floor, come on down.
Third floor.
But there is nothing to prevent us from selling them.
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions on Article 32? Do we have the FinCom report? Did I miss that?
Yeah, we did.
Okay. Article 33, Return the West School to Town Control, to see if the town will vote to transfer care, custody, and control of the West School so-called, and as further described in a filing on file of the office of the town clerk, from the school committee held for school purposes, to the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes, including sale or other disposition, or to take any other action relative thereto.
Following a reorganization of schools, the West Wareham Academy, formerly West Wareham School, is no longer needed by the Wareham Public Schools for the education of students.
Finance Committee voted favorable action seven, zero, zero, to transfer the West Wareham School to the, from the school committee to the Board of Selectmen as the school is no longer using this building. This article, again, is a formality as the vote of town meeting is required in order for the town to make any action relative to the building.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, through you. I just have a question. I've heard so much good stuff about this, the West Wareham Academy. Where are these kids going? Where did we put them? Why did they just go away?
I believe, I think East Wareham? I think East Wareham School. I think that, I could be wrong, but I think they were moved to East Wareham School.
So, we still have the program?
Yes. Which in essence is an identical building to the West Wareham School.
I know, I know.
It was built at the same time, and they're both identical. Article 34, Street Layout, to see if the town will vote to accept the layout on file with the town clerk of the following roads as public ways, Bashant Way and Lynn Road, and further that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to take by eminent domain or accept as donations portions of the privately owned property that include the layout of said roadways. This is a petitioned article, and the petitioner will speak to the article and make the motion.
I think I'll still do an explanation.
The intent of this article is for the town to accept the layout of Bashant Way and Lynn Road as public ways, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take by eminent domain or accept as donations portions of the privately owned property that included the layout of said roadways.
Finance Committee voted no action seven, one, zero. At the time of our review of the article, the Finance Committee recommended no action due to not having the formal report from the planning board relative to this article. The Finance Committee may reconsider its vote prior to town meeting.
I believe the planning board hearing on this article is the 20th.
Yes.
And then, do you have them scheduled for the Board of Selectmen after that?
My understanding is that the planning board's consulting engineer has identified some issues that are unlikely to be resolved in time for town meeting. Where this is a petitioned article, of course, the selectmen aren't in a position to pull it. The petitioners, I think, would be advised to pull the article so as to avoid the possibility of a no vote in advance of getting the street up to snuff and over the winter and coming back in the spring. I think it's probably how this is going to shake out. But that's just my best guess on this. I'm not speaking on behalf or against the petitioner.
I recognize Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. And just in furtherance of those comments, my recollection of the street acceptance laws is that town meeting may not act unless the layout is on file with the office of the town clerk at least seven days before town meeting. So, circumstances may dictate what we do.
Yeah, they may, and it may result in a motion to table until the following night, should they actually have all their ducks in a row and want to go forward. For example, if it gets filed on Tuesday, we can hear it the next Tuesday. If it gets filed on Tuesday and it comes up on Monday, that's what the process you would want to follow is for a motion to table until the end of the meeting, pick it up the next night.
So, again, this might be another one of those articles that, at the last minute, may appear with a different motion. Article 35, CEDO to Convey Land, to see if the town will vote to authorize CEDO with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to solicit proposals and convey the so-called Baypoint land as described in a filing at the office of the town clerk, and to take any other actions relative thereto.
In accordance with the procurement process for town-owned land, an article must be presented at town meeting to authorize the Board of Selectmen to transfer or sell property. Given this process, if to be completed, the potential sale of the property needs to take place before April town meeting. Town meeting voters are being asked to authorize the Board of Selectmen and the CEDO Board to proceed should these two bodies decide to sell or transfer the land at Baypoint. And Tom Brady did throw a touchdown pass to Shane Vereen with 1 minute and 30 seconds into the first quarter.
You're joking.
No.
Did a motion on that? Yeah. Somebody was in motion. Finance Committee voted favorable action seven, zero, zero. The property in question is owned by CEDO. CEDO is looking to see if there's better use for the property and having someone buy it rather than develop his property.
Is there any other questions on Article 35? Again, this is a petitioned article. Article 36, to amend the town of Wareham zoning bylaws, to see if the town will vote to amend Article Three of the Town of Wareham Zoning Bylaws Use Regulations to permit filling stations for gasoline, diesel fuel, and liquid propane by special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals in the General Commercial Zoning District under certain conditions or to take any action thereto.
A yes vote on this article would allow the Zoning Board of Appeals to permit gasoline, diesel, and propane filling stations or gas stations by special permit in the General Commercial Zoning District. In order to receive a special permit, stations need to be located on Cranberry Highway within 2,000 feet of an interstate highway and must be located on at least one acre parcel of land. In 2002, Article 34 of the annual town meeting was approved, which prohibited a development of new gas stations in the Strip Commercial District, which at that time encompassed a good portion of Cranberry Highway and West Wareham. Much of the Strip Commercial was rezoned to a General Commercial District in 2007. The bylaw defines the CG, or General Commercial District, as providing moderate-scale retail service, office, and related commercial uses, to be served primarily by vehicular access. Cranberry Highway is a high-volume road with approximately 18,000 vehicle trips per day. Since the prohibition of gas stations in 2002, at least three filling stations have closed, and others are being underutilized. A yes vote would allow the town to create high-quality filling stations, offering convenience items while providing users easy access to the interstate highways of 195 and 495. We feel this is a sensible planning approach as it targets new filling stations to where they're needed most in town while creating viable, attractive stations throughout, through the permit, special permit process.
Finance Committee voted favorable action five, two, against, and zero, abstained. This article has no immediate impact on the town tax rate or budget, but it could stimulate firm futures tax revenue. The article will provide the opportunity to cite filling stations adjacent to two major highways in town. It should be noted that any project would still be required to go through the Zoning Board of Appeals' special permit hearing process before a filling station could be approved or built.
Again, this is a petitioner's article, and the petitioner will be speaking to this article. I want to thank the Finance Committee for having us this evening, and for Town Council and the Town Administrator for staying beyond the call of duty to be here with us. The one thing I would ask of those attending town meeting, please try to come a little bit early so that you can get checked in. Sometimes we find that we have a line still trying to get in, and it holds up the beginning of town meeting, so you could plan on being there no later than 6:45 to give yourself time to get checked in and get a seat so we can take account right at 7 o'clock and get going. I really think that we can go through these articles and do a good job with them and get through town meeting relatively sooner rather than later. We do have Monday and Tuesday booked, the 27th and 28th, and then the following week we will not be, if we have to go beyond two evenings, we will not be able to have anything because that is the elections, and our town clerk and assistant town clerk will be busy with the elections and not be available for town meeting, and therefore, they are required to be at town meeting. So, without them, we cannot have town meeting, which would put us into the following week, and we would do Monday night the following week if need be. We could not do Tuesday night because that is left in the day. So, we're hoping, and if we all work together, I'm sure, and be very hopeful that we can do two nights and get it done and over with. So, I want to thank you for having us here tonight, thank the Finance Committee for your participation, and all of your hard work in getting your warrant prepped and ready and out. And I would encourage people that are watching tonight to go to Town Hall, pick one up, and if you have any questions, don't hesitate, please to ask the questions ahead of time and get your answers. And anyone would be very happy to answer the questions that you have. So, thank you again for having us.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I will, our next meeting will be Monday night, October 27, at 6:00 p.m., in the cafeteria at the high school. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.